That's it. He was playing for his contract for the same contract for when he was ending with the Padres.
I don't think he made that.
I said that last. He had a terrible season at one year with the Padres.
Yes.
And then one guy goes.
We're gonna take this much.
I mean, listen. So I moved there.
Right.
Oh, I was in the fourth place.
That's the last.
Oh, you didn't.
They're probably not.
No, no, no.
Okay.
I was in the name, so.
I.
That's what you said. Yeah, I was stationed.
Says everyone.
Pretty much.
My father.
He went to.
So your father.
That's a suck.
Yeah. I thought you were.
No, 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 no. I grew up. My dad was a great father. He got some.
You wish to be a person then?
I was way out. Well, not out, I did a year.
Morning, it's 10:00 A.M. Ask you to please rise if you're able, or open prayer and pledge allegiance before we should be in your public meetings. Heavenly fathers, we gather this morning, we thank you for another day you've granted us life. We thank you for your continued blessings. Pray to guide us each day to be good listeners. Help us to approach each conversation with an open heart and mind with humility. We seek the true wisdom that only comes from you. Look at our thoughts and actions. For we see all the conflict and wars that are present in the world. So thanks for the men and women that serve. Tomorrow we'll celebrate the birthday of the National Guard. It's the oldest military organization in America. Established in sixteen thirty-six in Massachusetts. These are everyday Americans that may be called from military operations throughout the world. We thank you for these heroes that serve the communities, state, and country. And you bless and protect each one of them. Season of peace and love. Pray for peace in a turbulent world. He sings with humbly request in your name. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, infinite, just as for all.
Five, six.
Hey, good morning. To me, our commissioners' public meetings this time ask for approval amidst the previous meeting.
I'll make a motion.
I'll second. Off their side.
Got it.
Aye. Do we have a comment on agenda items only at this time? Yes, sir. Morning.
My name is Steve Muebler. I reside in Anisport, Lippinose Township. And I'm a retired high school mathematics teacher in Jersey Shore. Among the other hats I wear, continue to wear, I'm on the Board of Trustees at Jersey Shore Public Library. Having served as two years as treasurer, I'm quite aware of the funding necessities for the organization. At our board meeting on Tuesday, it was presented to us from the county system representative that the budget proposed for the coming year included a six percent reduction of the county funding. And while at first blush, that seems like an insignificant number, it turns out that the bad news was that the, particularly the Jersey Shore Public Library, but I believe it's also all the outlying smaller libraries, for us, the twenty-one thousand dollar cut amounts to a fourteen percent reduction in our funding. Now, my understanding of what was presented as the reason for that was that the services that for years have been provided to the outlying through the county system, provided by J.B. Brown Library, were now to be, that we say, charged to the county system as opposed to supplied by J.B. Brown. J.B. Brown is the only library that's large enough to have in-house staff, full-time staff, for things like information technology, or cataloging. It takes a specialist to do that. And now, because of that shift of the funding, it's my understanding, and we were informed that the J.B. Brown budget will remain pretty much steady, but that the outlying libraries are going to be severely stressed, let's put it that way. And, you know, to my way of thinking, a county system is a county system. And I won't say the rich get richer, but the poor certainly are being strapped. And I, I understand that it's not your doing and not your responsibility, but I think you needed to be informed of that. Perhaps you need to do some investigation, and maybe there's nothing you can do, but that's where we are.
Hey, thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Commissioner Messina is on the library board, so I'll have him look into that. We weren't aware of that.
Yeah, I felt needed.
Yeah, because the library board makes a decision, once we allocate the money, the library board makes a decision for those monies go to which libraries. What just they go to, so. I'll have to ask. I'm sure he'll ask.
And just to, we can go down this path now, but, you know, in our budget season, we, there are lots of places of, I guess, financial awakening, shall we say? And it is, we have made cuts in lots of places. And, you know, it's kind of like, you know, in the car and pump the brakes and people are gonna feel it, and it's going to be felt throughout. It's not, the library is certainly not the only charitable organization that, you know, there were cuts everywhere. And we tried to do it intelligently, we tried to do it fairly.
It would be that the really critical issue is that it's being done all in one year. This is, yeah, you know, spread out over a couple of years. To bring things back into alignment where they ought to be, could be a process, not a.
And we get that, but we had to get our stuff in line now. We didn't have a couple of years. So we're, you know, we hope like a year, two, three years from now, everything gets back to normal and that people are, not just people, organizations, departments within our county are gonna feel it right now, but we're gonna get everything back to status quo and be solid going forward. And we also, we think, I know it's a tough time, we've talked about a lot of these places are going to have to look at fundraising efforts, like on their own, if they, and I know fundraising is hard right now, but like, it's, we're just not holding back money just to be greedy. We're trying to be as fiscally responsible as possible. We knew, those were tough meetings, those were really tough meetings.
Yeah. The library system is very important in the county. We acknowledge that. They receive the largest allocation from outside agencies, and I believe it was up to one point five million. Brought it back down to one point three. There were some agencies that were completely cut it off. I mean, they received nothing. And so we're trying to do the best we can do with the monies that we have to allocate to outside agencies. Okay, any other public comments this time?
To give donations.
Morning. Who do we have?
Hi, Hutch, I'm covering for Ben.
Okay, good morning, Hutch.
Good.
Okay, moving on this time to reports, Louie Nicky's covered. Morning, Nicky.
Good morning. First up, I have a vote to approve accounts payable cash requirement report for invoices due through December eighteenth, twenty twenty-four, to be paid on December eleventh, twenty twenty-four, in the amount of eight hundred sixty thousand nine hundred sixty-six dollars and sixty-seven cents. So that breaks down to about fifty-four percent out of the general fund, point eight-nine for grants at thirteen. Other grants is thirty-seven percent, and RMS is seven point three-two percent.
Okay, is there, and I'll have a motion for a story.
Yeah, I'll make a motion.
I'll ask questions or comments on the account requirements. You're now all fair side?
Aye.
And next I have vote to approve the credit card cash requirement report of purchases from October twenty-fourth, twenty twenty-four, through November twenty-fourth, twenty twenty-four, in the amount of five thousand two hundred twenty-two dollars and thirteen cents.
Motion.
Hold on.
Okay.
Yeah, I'll make a motion.
Second.
I'll say.
Any questions or comments? Off your side?
Aye.
Thank you, Nicky. Director.
And moving on to information items. Amy, Library County update?
Morning.
Morning.
Yes, thank you.
Thank you so much.
You don't care.
And I have extras, if anyone's interested in what I shared with the commissioners, but good morning. Thank you so much, commissioners and director, for giving me some time on the agenda today. As many of you already know, I'm Amy Resh. I'm the system administrator for the Leichman County Library System, and I'm the chief executive officer and director of the James V. Brown Library. And I wanted to start off by taking a moment to thank the county commissioners, the continued support of library service. We know that you've made some really hard choices this year with the budget, and we want to know how much we appreciate you continuing to support library service. And we know that many of you in this room have library cards and love your local library, and we can tell because we're continuing to be in the budget. So we want to take a moment to thank you for that. I wanted to mention that the system, so all of our locations, as of January first through November thirtieth of this year, has had four hundred and sixty-one thousand physical item checkouts this year, and fifty-seven thousand digital material checkouts, which is showing that almost half a million items have been checked out in our county this year alone, and we're not even at the end of the year yet. This meeting, I usually talk about outreach services because our county is very fortunate to receive county coordination aid. And this is a state grant that matches county funding. So because the county commissioners fund library service, the state matches a portion of that. And the way that our county uses those funds is we operate multiple vehicles in our quest to implement countywide cooperative service and extend service outside of our brick and mortar buildings. And as you all know, we have the biggest county, so that means we have a lot of places that don't have a brick and mortar building, and that's really hard for some of our people to get to. And one of the ways that our system reaches those people in a non-traditional way is our outreach services. So we have three bookmobiles to support this endeavor, and in the handout I shared, it talks about all of the locations all around the county, and there's lots of little dots all over, and those are locations that we visit. And on the back of that handout, it lists every place that each of our three vehicles go. And we have three vehicles, Bookmobile, which serves adult patrons. We have Books Bus, which serves patrons from birth to age eighteen. And now we have the Storymobile, that serves patrons from birth to five years of age. And one of the things that I think is so amazing about our system is that eighty-nine percent of residents receive access to service in their lived municipality through our outreach program. So that means they don't have to go very far, they don't have to go to Jersey Shore, they don't have to go to Montgomery, they don't have to go to Hughesville. They get service in their home municipality, which is really impactful for people. We also use county coordination aid grant funds to support daily intra-library delivery service. So if you request an item from the Montgomery Library, and it is at the, the Jersey Shore Library is closer to you, you can put in a request, and in one to two business days, it will come from the Montgomery Library right to you at the Jersey Shore Library, which is a huge resource savings of not only time and money, but wear and tear on vehicles. And we know that that is something that our patrons really love. Thousands and thousands of materials are delivered every single day in our daily delivery van. You probably see it on the road sometimes, it's black and it has a really nice graphic that has all the libraries listed. So if you see Bill, you can wave to him because he's always out on the roads. And I wanted to share an update. The James V. Brown Library has historically had two linked libraries. And after evaluating some changes that happened at McHenry Township, the township and the system headquarters made the decision to adjust service. So we're no longer serving people at the township building because they had very, very few hours, and it just wasn't being utilized in the best way possible, and the township needed that space back. So one of the things we've done is we've shifted to Bookmobile service. So now it's right on the main road up in McHenry Township, and the Bookmobile is seeing tons of patrons now, so we're really glad about that. And our patrons are happy to be served in a really new way. I also want to share some exciting news. The system and the James V. Brown Library have received funding for two story walks. And those are gonna be at Young's Wood Park in Williamsport and Trout Run Park. And a story walk is a series of book pages that are kind of torn apart, basically, and put on posts for children to review and to enjoy the outdoors, and they get to practice their reading skills at the same time. And again, it's a great way for people to have access for things to do on Sundays when our libraries are closed, or even after the libraries close on the Saturday, because, you know, we're not open till eight o'clock at night on Saturday, but especially in the summer, you need some things to do with the littles. So it's a really wonderful opportunity, and these are the first story walks in our county, so we're very, very excited about that. We also have some new system-wide initiatives that we're rolling out for twenty twenty-five. In the first quarter, we're partnering with the Community Theater League here in Williamsport, and their performance of The Lion King Kids. So we're going to give away free seats to people, to the dress rehearsals. We're really excited, it's an opportunity for people in our community to experience the arts, which we know are really important, and it can be really challenging if you have a big family. In the second quarter, we're gonna participate in Remake Learning again, and member libraries have their own programs, and the system coordinates programs. So this is all about math, science, literacy, so all those ways that children learn. It's a great opportunity for them to come together. A lot of our homeschool families love when we do Remake Learning. Last year, we had Ridiculous Nicholas, and he talked about science and all that fun stuff. And in the third quarter, we're gonna be doing summer learning, as we always do. And many of you have experienced summer learning as a child, and I'm sure that you have fond memories of that. I know I certainly do. And we always have a county performer that we share, and they go around to all the locations in the county. And in the fourth quarter, during National Young Readers Week, a character, so like, you know, help me with a character. Pigeon, isn't that one of them? Pigeon drives the bus or something? I don't know, I'm not children's librarian, but it's wonderful, the children love the characters. They're going to come to all of the libraries and do a storytime and a craft. So we're really excited about that. Before I wrap things up, I do want to thank a number of trustees who are here in attendance today. So these are the people that told me that they were going to be here, so I wanted to make sure that I highlight that. So we have Dennis Correll and Bob Weaver from the Dr. W. B. Conkle Memorial Library in Montoursville, and many of you go to that library. We have Diane Eck from the Jersey Shore Public Library. We have John Compher from the James V. Brown Library, and we have Larry Stout from the Montgomery Area Public Library. And we have Ben Brigandi, who is a trustee-at-large for the Leichman County Library System. And we do have two directors with us in attendance today, so I want to highlight them as well. Penny Johnson is the director of the Hughesville Area Public Library, and Robin DeGraucho is the assistant director at the James V. Brown Library. So before I end things, are there any questions? Is there anything that we need to know more about, or information I can send you afterwards?
No, I know I've said some of this before. You know, we sometimes have a perception that libraries are just ways that people who can't afford to buy books or to check or to order movies online, that it's just a cost-saving aspect for people of a lower socioeconomic level. And as I've gotten into this position, and I've learned all this, and as being a parent, our library system is so much more than that. The educational programs for the kids, my kids all went through them, both at the James V. and the Colton, we live in Montoursville, and the academic impact on them was obvious. And, you know, above and beyond that, just kind of some of the functional things of life, now that so many things are online, and people who don't always have computer access, but you, there are so many things you have to do online, and even to get a passport or just, but there are places that it's, it's so much more than like a different kind of bookstore. There, it's not just about quality of life, and it's not just about entertainment, it's educational, but it's actually like functional. People need the library, there are so many people who need the library. And it is, it's wonderful that we have it in so many, not just in Williamsport, but because we're the biggest county geographically, that we have so many satellite libraries to go along with it. And there's something else I wanted to say. And, oh, I also saw online, and this is just a neat little thing, I think, about our community, I hope it works out. I saw a post from Otto's Bookstore on Facebook, who had talked about that they're talking with the library, trying to work together, and people would see those as rivals. And they're like, we're not rivals, we're all different aspects of the same thing, we're trying to promote all these things, and if one succeeds, the other will succeed, and it's not, you know, one lives and one dies, it's not a winner and a loser, it's everyone's a winner. And at the end of the day, the everyone becomes our community. So that, it's wonderful to see the cooperation there, because, you know, in lots of aspects of society, we don't see cooperation, and people would feel threatened. So I was very encouraged to see that. So thank you for.
Yes, John has a wonderful analogy about, you know, we're the radio and they're the record store. And I know that perhaps it's a little passe at this point, because maybe people don't listen to the radio, but I do think that's accurate. You know, you can check things out at the library, and if you say, gosh, I just absolutely love that book, and I need to take it home and have a copy forever and ever, well, then Otto's is right down the street. And I know that a lot of our other libraries do use book sales. So if you're fortunate enough to find something, a gem in their bookstore, you can do that all the time. I think almost every library in the system has one at this point, a little area that you can go in and support the library, and also take a book home with you that you don't have to bring back. And I just wanted to mention, I did give you a copy of the programs that the James V. Brown Library is having in January. As you can see, they're robust, and we don't even put programs on there that are already full. We have programs that fill up within three business days, which we are really proud of. Our programming room holds eighty people, so it's amazing. We had Louis Bingo a couple months ago, and we had to do three sessions because the fire inspector probably wouldn't have been very happy if we tried to put everybody in one session. So I think that it's truly evident that our community loves, loves, loves their library, and I just want to thank the commissioners for continued support library service. I, I think you know that it's really impactful.
I will say the old people at the table still listen to the radio. I can.
It is a good thing, so we'll be the radio.
Radio and the records, that is a great analogy.
Yes, it is really wonderful.
So thank you, thank you.
Does anybody from the library like to come up and speak, say any words?
Except Larry, we hear from Larry. Yes, either.
Ben Brigandi, Secretary of the County System Board of Directors. And I wear many hats, too. One of them is also with the school board in South Williamsport, and I don't believe it's common knowledge enough outside parents of Central Elementary, but one of the bookmobiles was available for us for elementary school stops over the past school year, because, as some people know, we were undergoing construction projects, Central Elementary and also the high school. And as a result of this, the library was not accessible to students. So every couple of weeks, Bookmobile would come around, kids would come in and get books. This is an opportunity that would not have happened if the library not had this service that is funded by all of you. And I would just like to remind everybody that I'm from different parts of this county, the library was there for us, and it's gonna be there for you.
Thank you. Yep. Dennis?
Good morning.
Morning.
Please excuse me, I'm in the middle of cataract surgery, so one eye is looking good, the other one's not there yet, so hopefully next week I'll take care of that. Good morning, Commissioners, Metzger, Sortman, and Messina, and the Director and Solicitor. I'm Dennis Correll, volunteer treasurer, vice president for the Conkle Library in Montoursville. Well, I have with me Bob Weaver, who was our president. And I've come before you in the past as a president, but due to some volunteer changes this year, we did some analysis, and we decided to swap some roles. So we moved Bob up to president, and I'm now the treasurer, vice president. I'm a money guy, I have been my whole career, so it was just a logical position for me to support the Conkle Library. First, I'd like to thank each and every one of you as county commissioners. It is a job that appears to be thankless, but please know we support you in your job and everything that you do for Leichman County. No matter how tough the decisions are, especially when it comes to increasing or decreasing annual allocations for the library, I know they're hard decisions. As I step up today, I feel like I'm approaching the judge in the movie Miracle on Thirty-Fourth Street, as the UPS dumps piles of letters on your desk with the letter to Santa. I'd like to slip in one more. Thank you for allowing us as a library system to come before you and advocate for our annual funding. As in the past, I said I could spend hours telling you everything that we do. Amy does a great job of providing that information. For those of you who have not been in the library recently, we have partnered with the Montoursville School District and all the art departments, and we now have art in the library, so please stop in. We've had our first showing so far with parents and grandparents and relatives, and it's really exciting now to have this coordination with the local schools. And we are gonna be doing this on a six-month rotation basis of getting the artistic students into the library and showcasing their wear, and the parents are just thrilled that we're able to highlight their student. I know I've done this before, but I know we have a new county commissioner, and each time you borrow an item from the library, if you haven't, you get your little checkout receipt, and when your book or material is due back, and you'll find that on that receipt, the amount that you economically have saved by utilizing the library. I have mine as an example, and as of November, as a Leichman County resident, I personally benefited to the tune of fourteen hundred and eighty-two dollars and eighty-two cents. And that doesn't include my wife's patronage, even a bigger reader. I don't know how that compares to others, but as a retired member of this community, lifelong member, which is a significant benefit to me personally, and I gladly support that with my taxes. So that was for me personally. Let me put on my other hat. As a volunteer board member and treasurer, I have examined the funds accounting allocated to the library. In two thousand thirteen, our portion was around sixty-two thousand dollars. And with that, we made a collective benefit of our patrons of seven hundred and seventy thousand dollars. So for every dollar you allocate to us, we multiplied that by twelve point three times. But for every dollar, that was another twelve dollars and thirty cents that we've been able to provide as a benefit to the community. I don't know any other program that you fund that can demonstrate that rate in turn, and this is just for Conkle, this does not represent any other libraries, or probably could give you the very same numbers, maybe even greater, I don't know that. But the use of the funds is a clear demonstration that the library system takes the county money, multiplies it, and turns it into a direct benefit for our residents. An appreciation for the importance of the funding you provide, you need to know it is making a difference for the residents of Leichman County. And I and all the patrons appreciate your support and our funding. Thank you for hearing me out.
Thank you, Dennis. Anybody else? Thank you for being here, and thank you for your service. Appreciate it. This time recess, Commissioners' public meeting for salary board. Sorry for this time.
Good morning. Okay. First, I would like to request an addition of an item to the salary board agenda to reverse the November twenty-first salary board action to transition. um to reverse the November twenty-first salary board action to transition prison bail release program employees to Lake Homing County courts.
What, add that as a gen item?
Correct.
Okay, okay. Uh can I have a motion to add that as a gen item?
Or I'll make that one. I'll second.
All fair side? Aye.
Aye.
Okay.
Okay.
Right.
Vote and um I'll just slip that in first. No, no I won't. Yes, I will. Um so um vote to approve the reversal of the November twenty-first salary board action to transition prison bail release program employees to the Lake Homing County courts.
Is this, is this strictly pervertage because considered pre-trial services or
This is to reverse?
That move at all?
Correct.
So you're asking for a motion?
I am.
To reverse the decision?
I am.
Based on the which meeting?
November twenty-first.
November twenty-first. Is there a motion?
I'll make the motion.
Is there a second? Here you know second, the motion is denied.
Next up, we have vote to approve salary board minutes from the December fifth, twenty twenty-four meeting.
I'll make that motion. I'll second.
All fair side? Aye.
Um in the public defender's office, delete uh clerk three from the TBA. And do you want to do those separate?
Yeah, please.
Okay.
Thank you.
Yep.
Well, we have to, that's all one.
It's two separate positions in the public defenders.
Oh, add the administrative as a several, oh, I understand, okay, yes, I'll make the motion to delete the clerk three uh P four from the TDA.
I'll second. All fair side? Aye.
And then we have in the public defender's office, add administrative assisted paralegal training pay grade six to the TDA.
Yeah, I'll make that motion too.
I'll second. All fair side? Aye.
In RMS, uh we have delete administrative specialist slash training coordinator, pay grade six from the TDA.
Your motion.
I'll make the motion.
I'll second. All fair side? Aye.
And then um before we do the courts, I have a statement to read. Um I need to stress how concerned I am with this action. Going back to the November twenty-first vote and the way it was presented to the salary board and in the court's public comments at that meeting, the delineation between probation and bail is being removed by these titles. Salary board has been told one structure would be in place prior to the first vote. However, it has been made clear that it is not the structure that will be in place come January. Many discussions have been had that bail is a pre-trial situation and having court and probation supervise these employees and clients is counterintuitive. Rushing to put county dollars and employees under the courts in a structure that is not following the basis presented is not good for our employees' budget, the bail clientele, or our citizens and neighborhoods. Why are we choosing a path of least resistance that will give up revenue, expense control, and autonomy of employees when all the promises are already being broken or changed before the date of the change from the November twenty-first vote salary board made? In the courts, retitle bail release officer to pre-trial probation officer slash pay grade nine slash union.
Hey, um we have a representative from the courts here today from the court administrator's office, if they'd like to make a statement regarding those comments or anything else? It's
It's the controller's office.
They're survivors. No, no, no comment.
Okay. Is there a motion? To, go ahead.
Do you want to have any other public comments from?
Yeah, yeah, is there any air public comments? I see a bill officer here right now, yes. Mr. Walderoff? Yes, absolutely, please. Thank you for taking your time to be here, appreciate it.
Thanks, Scott. Um I I'm here today representing all the line members of the bail release program. Um which would include five officers. Uh I wanted to clear the air because from my understanding, there's been a lot of different narratives that have been pushed around and and I think it's important that finally the line officers are here to give you our our input and intake of uh what's going on. Um we agree with what is the action on the table today with moving to the courts and and the level of the structure that's put in place. We also agree with the with the titles. Um and part of the reason for that is because the courts have been very forthcoming with actually explaining to us the reasons why. Um we would, the only thing that we would request unanimously, everyone in the office would like for you to approve these items and make them effective today. Um the reasoning for that is because we need to retool and we need to get back to doing the full functions of our jobs right now. Um the more that we put our foot halfway in the door without going completely through that doorway is a detriment to the officers, but also to the public safety of the community. Um to make that decision to to do it today would come at a at a realized extra cost to to the county, which I've told will give or take a penny, twenty uh twenty-seven hundred uh fifty-two dollars and eighty-eight cents. Um we all agree that we would like to see that and the faster that we can get back to doing the full function of our jobs, we feel will actually save you uh costs in the future because it's going to take so much time to get us fully functional in our positions. This is where you're going to have to possibly task the sheriff's department, which doesn't have uh the extra ability to help us out and also the local police departments to be able to fill the void along with the actual adult probation office, which the intent is not to have the adult probation be there doing our jobs for us. Ultimately, they will have to in some aspect of going out into the field. However, the sooner that you approve this, and if you approve it today, the faster we'll get to exactly where we're supposed to be.
What cost does involve that? I might have mentioned a dollar amount, what does that involve?
That approving it today would mean that we would be part of the TDA of the collective bargaining agreement, so instead of the two percent pay increase, it would be a three percent pay increase. So that twenty-seven fifty-two eighty-eight is a one percent increase in in salary, however, we feel that you're going to realize more unanticipated costs with sending other officers from other departments fill the role for us.
Is there any comments on that? Um no, I I I'm 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 pleased to hear that the the team is is accepting of the move.
Um and that is effective as of today, that stands as of today, I personally spoke with each and every officer yesterday and reconfirmed today.
I'm a little shocked that you'd like to do it right away, but I'm also impressed with that as well.
Listeners and everyone, welcome to the House. Um from a bargaining unit perspective, as the unit, the bargaining unit voted on this, approved this, just making sure.
We have not had communication with them. Uh we would like to start that communication, but we can't until it's it's approved.
I understand. The only reason I say is like the effective date, are we jumping the gun or?
I think we should make sure we we could always table it and then make it retroactive after we get the information that we need. Make that decision.
We we would be accepting of that, you know, to the final on an MOU. Um but it would be important to be able to try to get that as fast as possible so we can really start getting the meeting.
We'll we'll table today and we'll probably should we'll get working on it. Can we ask um, we ask Stahl to come up for a second? Yes, because we want to see the position of the court. I'd like to see your, I'd like to know your position on because they're going to be taking over the department. Yeah. So it's important that we have their input too, Pat, before we make a decision. I guess the question is, what what's your concern or or is any issues with us doing this quicker than I believe we are set for June sixth?
I would request that it not be tabled as far as making this decision and choosing an effective date. Um I think that just gives more opportunity for the controller to try to derail this plan. I would like to note that the controller is the spouse of the supervised bail offices supervisor would not be part of this unit. But so that's a side concern that I didn't intend to bring up until you asked me to approach the podium. I again request that not be tabled. Um we I was under the belief that um we're hopeful that this move would take place before the first of the year or January first. Um so that's again, what I would request today would be spectacular as well. But again, I wouldn't want it postponed or tabled any longer at this point. I can't speak of not my position to speak about the collective bargaining unit and how quickly someone would become a member. But we had wanted these changes to take place as soon as possible, but at the latest, um you know, January first.
Hector, when we had had conversations previously, the date was always January fifth. Why is it being moved January first and then at the latest now possibly today? Why the everything being so expediated?
Hmm, there were different conversations about dates.
It was always January fifth when we sat down.
January fifth is the first Monday of January.
Yes, so it was initially, it was proposed January first. And then I had mentioned um typically the county likes changes to coincide with the beginning of pay periods.
Yes, correct.
So actually, no, we, when we, this discussions have been going on for so long, so actually um the first dates that were thrown out were off in October, actually, not January first, it was October. Don't quote me, the eighteenth, I think, was the beginning of a pay period, so there have been multiple dates and it's just been prolonged further and further, so I would have liked the October date, I would love today's date. Um
Actually, January fifth is a Sunday.
Which is the beginning of the pay period.
That's why that date has been thrown out. I I agree, everything was initially in the fall, but when we had these discussions and a lot of questions, who was going to take this over? It it was going to be recently, it was going to be January fifth because of the paid period. This is the first today that I'm hearing, January first and and now as recent as today. So I think we need to, personally, I think we need to keep it January fifth. Nikki, what is our, what is our next start date?
Now, we have one more. We said it. Thank you.
Thanks, Nikki. Can I, can I make a motion that we dive into executive session real quick?
You make that motion, I have a second.
I'll second.
Okay, all fair side? Aye. Both short executive section. Sure. Okay, will we convene at this time?
Where are we? Which one? We have, this one is our first one.
All right, I will make a motion uh to retitling the bail release officer to pre-trial probation officer five, pay grade nine, as part of the union, with the date of being January first.
What year?
Next year, twenty twenty-five.
Okay, there's a second.
I'll second that one.
All fair side?
Aye.
Next.
Um, or I I would just like to make a comment.
Yeah, let's do some comment. I'm sorry, I should have asked comments.
I I just think that um I I think the positive here is everything is going to move in the direction that was originally uh approved. Um this change really is just to prove the title, not the change of timeframes and everything else. Uh and to allow the five officers to become part of the the union or collective bargaining unit, whichever way you want to make that statement. Um I think that with this being done and with the current supervisor being out on leave at this point, that I'm okay if the courts want to start having discussions with the bail officers of their new roles or the way the roles are going to be, that 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 process gets started so that by the time we hit the ground running on, and I think to to Mr. Walderoff's point, that gives you guys some direction and understanding and commitment of where you're going. Don't have to wait till date to get that process done. Uh but I think for the cleanliness of the collective bargaining, if that takes place, I believe January one, that I'll keep that clean and bring everybody together at the same time.
And I believe that then the reason for the retitling, we spoke with Judge Gardner the other day, who's going to be one of the administrative judges over the department, he's going to be co-administrative judge along with Judge Buzz. Uh we had a meeting with him and he expressed to us the reason for the title change now is because of of uh reimbursement purposes. Uh, is because of, of uh reimbursement purposes regarding the firearms training. And it was critical for the firearms training for them to have the proper qualifications because right now they would be sending two. Probation officers out in the field of a bill officer, which is not cost effective. This way, once the trainees, training is completed, then they can match up one-on-one and go out in the field. Take care of, of the, uh, the bill needs. Uh, the intent is to continue to keep Bill in the field. So that they can, they can proactively do their job proactive as Mr. Waldorf, well, Mr. Waldorf has described today. Uh, to continue that efficiency within our department to be in the field, supervise, uh, the clients properly. So, um, Judge Gardner expressed that was the reason for the name change was for the reimbursement of the firearm certifications.
And we were also happy that there, we finally had a meeting between, um, bail and the courts. Um, I know that this scuttlebutt has gone on a long time because there were so many avenues we had to, to look at. What was the best alternative? What were we allowed to do? What weren't we allowed to do? And I know there's a lot of conjecture and a lot of, you know, talk. And, um, now that they've got to sit down together, they had a long meeting the other morning. We've heard the meeting went really well. That, um, communication is good and, um, we are, we are, I don't know, excited to go forward, but we, we really think this is a good move for the county. In a lot of ways and, um. We're ready for it to get started.
Okay, any other comments? We have a motion and a second on the floor. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye?
No.
Opposed?
Opposed.
Opposed, okay, so carry three to one.
Okay, and we have one more, uh, retitel bail release program manager to pretrial probation officer supervisor pay grade 10.
Hey, is there a motion?
I'll make that motion.
I'll say that.
All fair side?
Aye.
Opposed.
Okay. Is that all, Nikki?
That's it.
This time we'll adjourn the summary board. We could be in the commissioner's public meetings. Before we do so, I believe we have a, uh, correction to read director regarding the resolution. Does Dad be added? According to, um. Tropical Storm Debbie. Very tough there. Yes, okay. Yes, could you read that, please?
Sure.
So the correction.
Uh, Commissioner seeking approval to add item 5.14 corrected to read. Vote to approve resolution 2024-27 authorizing. For go the bidding process for repair work due to tropical storm damage.
Hey, is there a motion to add that to the agenda?
I'll make the motion.
I'll say that.
All fair side?
Aye.
Okay. Move on to action items this time. And Jason, you're first. How you get to be first all over?
Clean living, Commissioner.
Good morning.
Can we vote on that? Wait a minute, you work at the landfill.
That's right.
How's that clean living?
Well, yeah, good point, good point. Commissioners, I have pretty simple ones for you today. 5.1, vote to approve amendment number three to the agreement with Mahan Tango Enterprises. This is an extension of their two-year contract from January 1st to 25th, December 31st to 26th. This is at no increase in cost. Mahan Tango is basically our only option for like a tire recycling program. They make crumb rubber, they do a lot. If you ever go down 11 and 15 below Liverpool, it's up on the right. It's pretty much the avenue most places throughout the state take for options. So seeking your approval.
Okay, have motion.
I'll make the motion.
I'll say that.
All fair side?
Aye.
Thank you. Commissioners, next is a, an amendment to the agreement with Sunbury Motors. This is, uh, a 2% increase. This is an as needed basis. Sunbury Motors handles fleet work with our Western Stars if needed. Uh, things like that, but that's for a three-year agreement at 2% increase.
Okay, motion.
I'll make the motion.
I'll say that.
All fair side?
Aye.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Have a good day.
You too.
Hutch, you're up.
Wait, one second. Michaels.
One second, Hutch.
Yep. Oh, never mind. Wrong Michael.
Yeah, say I'm gonna take it. And there's nothing else on.
You're good.
Right.
Okay, all right, Hutch, you're up.
Okay, 5.3 and 5.4 are 2025 maintenance contracts with Easter Communication. Uh, 5.3 receiving approval for $20,301.84. Uh, this contract maintains our backups system, our backup bases at the towers. As well as the backup center, as well as our tower alarm systems watching, you know, the generators and cameras and everything.
Okay, so you want to handle both together or separately?
Okay, sure. It's up to you.
And let's, uh, handle them together since it's the same, uh, it's gen, same vendor.
Uh, yeah.
All right, um. Motion accept action 5.3 and 5.4 is presented on the agenda.
I'll make that motion.
I'll say that.
All fair side?
Aye.
Okay, thank you, Hutch.
Great, thank you.
Yep, Mike?
Stuff in the back of the room.
Want to give a steps in? Feel better. Good morning. Uh, vote to ratify the amendment, uh, with Career Link. For the on-the-job training program, this is with the Public Defender's Office. This will be a half salary reimbursement. To the county for six months. Uh, they took on a, uh, paid internship person from Career Link. He completed that, uh, that process and then. That was kind of with the TDA changes that went with today with the Public Defender's Office to move them into a new position. Uh, so this will be a six-month paid internship, uh, training program, uh, for reimbursement to the county of half their salary.
Hey, great. Uh, motion accept.
Yeah, I'll make that motion. So I can, any questions or comments? I, yeah, I just want to say, you know, we're, we are thrilled with our, uh. Relationship Mike has built with Career Link. Um, it's really helped us in, in a couple of departments. I was at a, at a meeting. Uh, and it was actually in inter-county, it wasn't even in Lake Coming County, and Career Link was there giving the presentation. And, um, most of their stuff was directed towards the private sector, but when it was over, I went up to the lady and I said. Do, do these programs work in the public sector as well? And she said, absolutely. So I said, well, we have a new HR gun. We need to get you in touch and, um, and it's been great. It's, it's really been good and, and we're looking forward to more of it.
Absolutely. Thank you.
All fair side?
Aye.
Commissioners, I'm gonna, you know, cans. 5.6, seeking your approval on the agreement. Rentokel, North America. Perlic. 2024 budget item. This is for pest control at our facility.
And motion accept.
I'll make the motion.
I'll say that.
All fair side?
Aye.
All right.
5.7, seeking your approval on the amendment to the agreement with Icon Fire Solutions. Another 2024 approved budgeted item for our fire sprinkler inspections. Which extends the contract from. On January 2025 to December 31st, 2020.
And motion accept.
I'll make the motion.
I'll say that.
All fair side?
Aye.
5.8, 9, 10, Leslie.
Good morning, Commissioners. Good morning, Matt. Um, asking your permission to present 5.9 first, um, before we do 5.8.
Okay.
Um, so, um, 5.9 is an additional service that the APO asks for, um, with their. CDI software. It's going to be for court reminders and pretrial application. Um, the court reminders is, um, $4,500 addition. And a $5,000 addition for the pretrial application. So this is, um, we're just seeking your approval, um. To add those to our current contract with CDI.
This is to, we have a little bit of history on this from the.
Yeah, I did ask, um, APO to be here in case you did have questions.
So, two. But the two services, the one, as Leslie spoke, is the court reminders. So that's gonna help our court appearance and lessen our amount of bench warrants, which also lessens the amount of costs. Um, the system has been proven across multiple jurisdictions to be effective in increasing public safety, also increasing, um, the court appearance rate. So that's one part of it. Um, then the second part of it is the pretrial module, which will also streamline things for our bail department. For the pretrial services officers. That's gonna allow them with effective case notes. Right now, they're currently using Microsoft Word to do this. Um, and it's also gonna assist in our data collection so that we will be able to provide annual reports to you. So that you can see the successes that we have achieved over the year.
Okay, so regarding the, um, the court reminders, I, I sat through the, uh, presentation by the. That was, had to do with the study. And they, they had mentioned that, uh, there could be a. Set number of reminders. Um, have the courts decide how often those reminders are gonna be?
We have not decided how often those reminders will be. Um, at a minimum, we are hoping that every single person is reminded at least once.
Okay.
Um, but the intent is to be reminded more frequently than that one time, but that number has not been determined yet.
Okay, um. Is the cost based on how many calls are made?
It is not.
Okay. Because I saw on the study there was, you could do it as many as five, seven times, and I'm, I'm not in favor of. Of, uh, being babysitters and, you know, people have to be held accountable.
Absolutely.
And I understand a reminder is important, maybe one or two. When we start getting up into that many reminders. It's, it's, I think defeats the purpose of what, what we're about is holding people accountable. So I would hope that the courts would, uh, take that in consideration, please.
Absolutely.
That's a good point, Mr. Metzger. When I've had the discussions with the MDJ offices, and they're not necessarily related to this, but at the MDJ level. We had talked about, um, potentially like 10 days, seven days, and then a day or two before. But maybe we'll end up doing just the two before. I'd also want to note that this cost, this is something regardless of which office the. Pretrial services agency is under, this is a cost that would have been incurred anyway or should have been because it's a, a needed. Advancement in technology.
Yeah, I understand, you know, it's good to have reminders, but just not accessory reminders.
But yeah, and I'm referring to both this and the case management portion as well.
All right, thank you. But, uh, but sorry, you're saying it's like unlimited texting, whether we send one or three or five, the cost.
The cost is not.
Okay, okay, thank you. All right, thank you. Okay.
And Commissioners, this is, um, in the budget.
Okay. Uh, is there a motion acceptus?
Yeah.
I'll say that.
All fair side?
Aye.
Thank you, Commissioners. Okay, so then the, um, then to go back to 5.8. This is, um, just seeking your approval to, um, to pay for the software for the adult probation soft, or, uh. Department in the amount of $19,840.
Okay, it's your motions.
I'll make that motion.
I'll say that.
All fair side?
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Um, last, um, seeking your approval to approve a Marco contract. This is for a three-year maintenance and repair on, um, printers that were installed this year. There are seven total printers. The amount, um, is going to be $389.25 a quarter. And this actually comes out to .015 per print.
Motion accept.
I'll make the motion.
I'll say that.
All fair side?
Aye.
All right.
Thank you.
Thank you, Leslie. Mike?
Yeah, 5.11 through 5.15, and the first one I have for you is vote to approve the 2025. Paddle 4D Attorney Contract with Patricia Shipman Esquire. Uh, this is 66% reimbursable from Paddle 4D monies. And this is a continual expense that we have here.
Motion accept.
I'll make that motion.
I'll say that.
All fair side?
Aye.
The next item I have for you is vote to approve the amendment to the agreement with Allison Calhoun. It's just to extend the, um, the term of services for barber services at the.
Okay, motion accept.
I'll make the motion.
One second.
All fair side?
Aye.
Next item I have for you is vote to approve the grant monitoring agreement for Act 13 funds with Old Lake Coming Touchup Fire Company. Um, in the amount of $313,785.
Okay, can you explain a little bit, you, what your intents are?
Yeah, um, so they're, um, planning on doing a, um, regional emergency services hub project, very similar to what, um, a tourist hall previously did, which the county supported that. Um, it would put people on call and, and provide bedding and. Sleep and also be able to have accessible, um, needs to emergency services right there at their facility.
Great, yeah. A motion accept. I'll make the motion. Second, questions or comments? We want to thank your sir, thank them for their service also.
Certainly.
It's, uh, we have many outstanding, uh, fire departments and they're one of.
Yep.
Thank you. All fair side?
Uh.
Uh, the next time I have for you is vote to approve resolution 2024-27, authorizing the forego of the bidding process. For, um, necessary repair work at two, um, Lake Coming County bridges due to Tropical Storm Debbie. And this was all, um. Acknowledged as a result of a bridge inspection report done by Larson Design.
Okay. Shane, you like big comments? So.
I was just here to answer your questions. Okay, um, this is, uh. Yes. Gotta find yourself two, please. Stop the good Lake Coming County planning. Uh, this was actually the next step, uh, last missionaries meeting, you approved the, uh. Encumberment to deliver fuel spons to cover the cost of repairs. Um, this is the next step, so we don't have to go out to bidding and everything like that because it is an emergency situation. Uh, Larson Design actually gave me, uh, the quote yesterday, so there'll be more to come, obviously, because you'll have to approve, um, we'll have to approve that, that cost there. What we have the money encumbered to, um, to move forward with the project and the goal here would be to. Lead the project in the spring, um, do both, do both bridges under, under one contract, I believe is the plan.
Yeah, thank you. Motion accept.
I'll make the motion.
I'll say that.
All fair side?
Aye.
And the last item I have for you is vote to approve the River Valley Transit Authority Intergovernmental Agreement in the amount of $100,000. This is continual expense the county occurs as part of transit services that they provide at our livestock view complex.
Okay, motion accept.
I'll make the motion.
Second.
All fair side?
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mike.
16 and 17, Shannon.
16 and 17, Shannon.
All right, Commissioners, um, 5.16 is vote to approve the agreement with Delta Development Group for in the amount of $80,000. Uh, this is a 2024, 2025 budget approved item, sorry. Um, uh, this is an annual contract that we, uh, have with Delta Development. Um, what they do is. They give us an estimated amount of services. We turn them on when we meet them only. So we don't typically spend the entire amount. Uh, in the past, um. This is generally for planning-related duties. However, when we have seen other grant opportunities, we have offered our, the services out to. The coroners, currently the MDJ offices, uh, they helped us with the grant for them. So. So it's not just supporting planning. If, if we're, we're not utilizing that amount, we. Work with other departments to, uh, turn on their services when needed with the commissioners.
Motion to accept.
I'll make the motion.
I'll say that.
Any questions or comments? You're now all fair side?
Aye.
Um, 5.17 is, uh, the vote to approve the appointment of Breckos to the Lake Coming County Planning question. This would be his first full term. Um, the effective dates would be January 1, 2025 to December 31st, 2028.
Okay. A motion accept, Mr. Rose.
I'll make the motion.
I'll say that.
All fair side?
Aye.
We want to thank him.
Thank you.
Commissioners, seeking your approval on the appointment and reappointment of the following individuals. Williamsport Municipal Airport Authority for a five-year term effective 1/1/2025 to 31 December 2029. Appoint Suzanne Snyder. Appoint Stephen Lo. Appoint Michael Reed. Appoint Representative Joanne.
Okay, motion to reappoint to three and appoint, uh, a new, uh, recommendation.
Yeah, I'll make that motion.
I'll say that.
Any questions or comments? We want to thank these individuals, um, for serving on the airport authority and wanting to serve. for serving on the Airport Authority and wanting to serve on the Airport Authority. Uh, they have many challenges with the airline industry the way it is and uh, they have a tough task for them to bring us recommendations.
Yeah, there, there's a lot of red tape and there's a lot of, with the federal and all the combinations thereof. There's a, this is not easy. It's not easy in any way. Nope.
All fair side?
Aye.
Aye.
Five nineteen, Commissioners, seeking your approval. Correction of an administrative error extending the reappointment of Jason Fink to Likecoming County Industrial Development Authority for a five-year term. And, uh, originally it read from one-one, twenty twenty-three to twelve, thirty-one, twenty-three. And it was corrected to three one-one, twenty-three to twelve, thirty-one, twenty-two, twenty-seven.
Okay. Motion accept.
I'll make that motion.
I'll say.
All fair side?
Aye.
Commissioners, seeking your approval on the appointment and reappointment of the following individuals to Likecoming County Development, Industrial Development Authority for five-year terms effective one-one, twenty twenty-five to twelve, thirty-one, twenty twenty-nine. Reappoint Jason Vogel. Appoint Michael Alexander.
Okay, motion accept.
I'll make the motion.
I'll say.
All fair side?
Aye.
Commissioners, seeking your approval on the appointment and reappointment of the following individuals to the Likecoming County Agricultural Land Preservation Board for three-year terms effective one-one, twenty, twenty-five to twelve, thirty-one, twenty twenty-seven. Appoint Phil Crowder. Appoint Robert Benita. And appoint Ben Napp Pepper.
Yeah, there's a motion. So.
Yeah, I'll make that motion.
I'll say.
All fair size?
Aye.
Commissioners, seeking your approval on the appointment and reappointment of the following individuals to Likecoming County Water and Sewer Authority for five-year terms effective one-one, twenty-five to twelve, thirty-one, twenty twenty-nine. Reappointment of Paul Winston. Appointment of Jeffrey Brooks.
Okay, motion accept.
I'll make the motion.
I'll say.
All fair side?
Aye.
Yeah, lastly, Commissioners, seeking your approval on the reappointment of Brian Shear to Likecoming County Authority for a five-year term effective one-one, twenty-five to twelve, thirty-one, twenty twenty-nine.
Motion accept.
I'll make that motion.
I'll say.
All fair side?
Aye.
All right, we want to thank all the individuals that have served on these boards and ones who are willing to step forward to serve in the years to come, um, on these boards, um. You know, they're all volunteer. We thank for, for their service and, and time. Um, a lot of these boards are, none of these boards are easy. A lot of them have tough decisions to make and that affects our communities and we want to thank them for their service. Any comments, anybody?
Yeah, um, you know, we're, we're closing in on twelve months now as, as a new team of Commissioners here in the county and, and it's been a great year, been a challenging year. Um, so I, I would just like to make the comment, you know, we, we've made a lot of decisions, made a lot of changes. Some, some are probably great for a lot of people and some are probably not great for a lot of people. But as I had a conversation with both Commissioner Metzger and seen it over the last few weeks, you know, our, our decisions aren't he sitting here and coming up with an idea or one of the two of them. The three of us communicate and the three of us have reached out to everybody. I know one of the things we said when we started here together as a team was we weren't gonna be a top-down, we were gonna be a bottom-out. I think we're a bottom-up. I think we've been very successful with that. A lot of people may or may not see that because maybe they didn't like the outcome. But, but the reality is, is every decision's been made with input from a department or a committee or a elected official. And sometimes the outcome isn't what they directed us towards. But that outcome wasn't done individually either. The three of us then sat and made proper decision to move the county forward. So, uh, I just kind of wanted to clarify that because I, I feel at times, you know, it's real easy to criticize our decisions after the fact, but I wanted it to be open to the public and open to everybody that works for the, for the county or is involved in the county. Every decision is, is thought about. I don't know that we've had an easy decision, so everyone's been, been difficult, but, um, I appreciate the support of our team room and our team here at the table, um, moving us forward, but it, it's all going to be in the good of the county as time moves on. Thank you.
Anything?
Yeah.
Okay.
I'm gonna come.
Other comment this time?
Nice to stand by.
If you go up here, it's easier for the recording, for the audio awesome.
Uh, Jack McCurn, uh, Wham Sports. Uh, just a question on how, how are you making, I didn't, I wasn't here earlier for this meeting, but how, how are you making out on the budget? Um, cause next week is the final presentation.
Things are progressing. My team's been with this almost, uh, if not every other day, pretty much daily. And we met with other departments to see where we can, if we can, uh, save money and go forward, uh. Things are better than what they were.
It's been a laugh a minute.
I, I just wanted to, I wanted to go back to the, um, public meeting that was held because I did bring up a question and I've, I've checked with two other people and I don't know if finances on this, but on, in the Act thirteen area, it had revenue of five point two million and we also had fences of five point two million. And my question was, um, you know, I, I know this year you didn't, I don't think you received, the county received what they, you know, what they had projected they would receive. Gas prices really haven't done a whole lot this year. They, they're still, you know, probably under three, three dollars. Um, so I, I just don't, I don't see that the revenue that you would get. And, and then when you consider the, let's see, I think, uh, you get your check around July first. So we're probably three quarters of the year already into what, you know, making up that new number for next year. And my, my comment was, well, you know, what makes up the five point two million? Is that based on revenue? And the answer that I got was, well, part of it's revenue, but part of it's, uh, we're, or taking it out of the fund. And I didn't believe you could do that. And I've, I've asked two people and they that are both accounting related and one of them was a prior finance person in the county. And they said, no, you know, it's gotta be based on, on what you believe the actual revenue is gonna be. So I, I would just caution on, on that so that you automatically don't get yourself into, uh, some sort of shortfall. Um, the other, the other thing that I was kind of concerned about that I had thought about was the, the, uh, the contingency um, with two point, I think it was two point five million. Um, and, you know, you explained that some of that had to do with maybe holding back for, uh, potential uh, employment purposes, uh, coming up. And I, and, and just looking at today's agenda, it, you know, it looks like we still do, the county still uses the TDA, um, to approve positions. And on, on, and I, and if I recall, I think that the county's workers' comp renewed sometime maybe this month. Thought it was at the end of the year. So, um, you know, it's probably too late now, but, you know, with workers' compensation, whatever the, whatever the projected payroll, um, numbers are that you give the comp people, that's what they base the, um, that's what they base your projected cost going to be. It, it's not gonna have any effect on, on the rates that you're paying. Uh, but it's gonna be, it's gonna affect what you pay a monthly amount for insurance purposes. And, but if you don't spend those wage amounts at the end of the year, there, there should be an audit of that. I mean, the workers' comp people are gonna require that, but, you know, if you're projecting forty million dollar payroll and, and it only ends up being thirty-five million, well, the insurance company should be sending you a check back, uh, for that difference. So I, you know, I wouldn't, I wouldn't worry too much, you know, and you've, and I'm sure you've probably already submitted that for, you know, this next, uh, renewal period. Um, and, and, and a long run, I'm thinking of, you know, if you take, if you could take that contingency from two point five down to five hundred thousand, it's, it's gonna make the, it's gonna make the budget look better. But it's also, I think, gonna help you if you go to, uh, which it sounds like that the plan is to do a bond issue. Um, you know, when you do the bond issue, they're gonna be looking at, you know, what the proj, projected budget was for the year and you know, they're gonna, they're gonna drill you on that kind of stuff. And I think the better that you can show it, the, the better off, uh, uh, you're gonna be. Um, but I, I guess I just wanted to underscore the, the especially the workers' compensation that, you know, you should be getting a refund if, if the wages aren't what you project them at. And, and you know, my, my recollection was we always battled back and forth about the head count. And, you know, it's hard to tell looking at at the last budget book I had was from last year. You know, I think you're, they mix employee, you know, it said like six hundred people. Why? You know, what is the full-time count? What's the, the part-time or full-time equivalent, uh, number there, you know? You know, trying to push the full-time count down as low as it can be. Um, was, I think that was always the goal for, you know, for operational purposes and the long-term effect on the county. Uh, but I, those, I just wanted to share those comments because I know next week it's too late to do that.
Yep, we're working on it as we speak.
It's worth.
Okay, thank you. Any other public comment? Me from online.
Not tonight, you can repeat.
We have completed our agenda, so we will be back here December nineteenth, um, twenty twenty-four. Ten AM. Thank you, everybody.